Good evening.
Good evening.
Looks like we have a full house. How exciting. And Bob, Finn, I think Maria may be joining us a bit later. See you Kathy. And who else do we have here? Jerry, you're here. All right. Just getting set. So board members, do you all have the packet that Kathy circulated? As well as some draft motions. Everything up here once. Right. Thank you Kathy. Um, so I want to open the public hearing for this evening for the zoning board of appeals. We have a lot of people on the, on the agenda. So we'll just jump right in. And do we happen to have anyone here for 340 Main Street? We have two continued public hearings. And let me just double check that we are, we are after seven. So there, that being the case, just for the benefit of anyone in the audience, these, these are continued public hearings. We've continued them for a number of meetings. We've had no one in attendance for the last two, I believe. So at this point, I think it's appropriate that we close these. And I think we just need to double check procedurally what we need to do, but essentially dismiss them. I don't think we need to dismiss them with prejudice if they want to reapply and come back in front of the board when they have plans to move forward. That's fine, but we just don't need to be carrying these on the agenda going forward.
So Madam Chair, do you need a motion for that purpose?
I think I do. And just, I wanted to double check Kathy, do you happen to know what procedurally, what the appropriate, are we just closing and dismissing without prejudice? Is that?
Um, that's. I'm not sure whether to, I don't think you can withdraw them, but.
No.
I don't know whether you need to deny them or approve them.
So we, if we were, since we don't have enough to make a favorable vote on either of, are there these? It would be denying them and we could deny them without prejudice. So that if they want to come back.
Right.
Within, you know, come back once they have plans. I'm, I'm fine with that. Obviously, the board needs to concur.
And Madam Chair, that they would have to initiate the process, the notifications, everything that goes with as if they were starting all over.
That is correct.
It's been a while.
It's been a while. I mean, I am very hopeful that for this property that they will come up with a proposed tenant or user and some plans that they can bring in front of us and the CPC to move forward. But at this point, we've had radio silence for a bit, and I think it makes sense to move those aside. I don't mean to penalize them. So I don't think, I would not vote to dismiss with, or vote against with prejudice, but simply want to clear the docket. And when they're ready to come back with something fresh, happy to look at it.
So just for the clarification, if there's really going to be no positional difference between dismissal and denial, I would offer that dismissal is the cleaner of the two. To note, but in a matter of law, for example, if the party didn't show up, they wouldn't be found in any way. The court would just dismiss and tell them if they were trying to revisit it, they'd have to file a new if it was either a matter of complaint or petition. So I would offer that we should just dismiss without prejudice with an understanding that in the event they reapproach, that they are obligated to again, file as if it knew. And it would see, and not to, but quite frankly, I think that they don't know what, it could be that they don't know what they're going to do with the properties. And when they file a new, they'd come forward with a better understanding of purpose.
Bob, I think that's, that's correct. I think that was a motion. Then I believe you, you second that.
Yes.
So I'll make a.
Formalize it.
With regard to 340 Main Street, the special permit for use construction slash landscaping made by applicant Jose Thay. I move that the matter be dismissed without prejudice. For reasons noted on the record.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Barbara and I.
Finn Ruguchi, I.
Jennifer Platt, I. And now we have a second matter also for the same location. Special permit for use as auto repair shop applicant Michael Laws. I don't believe they have been here. Either. So I would move that, or move that we make the same motion for this.
So for that purpose, with regard to the application for 340 Main Street, specifically special permit for, for use, that being an auto repair shop submitted by applicant Michael Laws. I move to dismiss the matter without prejudice. And in the event that the party wishes to reapproach that, as noted on the record, it would be with all process and procedures laid out by our bylaws.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Barbara and I.
Finn Ruguchi, I.
Jennifer Platt, I. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. That moves two things. We have one other continuation. That's 172 Park Street. Fleet Boston, the applicant was looking for a variance to upgrade the lighting. We've talked to them twice before. And they were going back to revisit their plans to see if they could do what they had hoped to do without either, without a variance from our board or in a way that would have lesser impact on both the streets and the neighboring properties. Do we have anyone here for 172 Park Street?
Has there been any communication to the town Kathy?
They sent me an email requesting a continuance.
Thank you.
Well, that's easy. On their request to continue. I move that we approve that to move that to next, do they, next month? Does that work with them?
We need to set up a date.
Do you want to set a date for the motion?
Yes, we do. So looking at, I'm just trying to have a calendar here. Second Tuesday in August would be the 11th.
Second Thursday.
Second Thursday, sorry.
Sure.
That. Works for me.
That's, that's fine for me.
Maria, does that look okay?
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely. All right. So make a motion to, well, actually they made the request. I would move that we approve their request to continue their hearing until the 11th of August. All good?
Thank you.
All right. Okay, we have, that was old business moving on to new business. And we can just tick through these in order. We have an applicant Cindy Aurora, 475 Park Street. We have Cindy with us this evening. If not, then we'll just, let's skip this one and move on if we do not have the applicant with us. We can revisit that one at the end. About 4 Caroline Road, Mr. Robert Pierce.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening. Glad to have you here. Let's find, is that the right, let me make sure of the right public hearing notice here. And we will officially open this. Okay. A virtual, like to open a virtual public hearing will be held on Thursday, July 14th, 2022 at 7:00 PM on petition of Robert Pierce for Caroline Road, North Reading, MA, map 34 parcel 12 for home occupation special permit to run his consultation company per article 200-42 North Reading zoning bylaws. Mr. Pierce, would you tell us briefly what it is you would like to do?
Well, my goal is, is I'm starting up a new business where I am consulting with other businesses, looking at their business management and how they operate to help them improve in multiple fields from marketing to sales to how they deal with employees and stuff. And I'm going to be using my desk here, which we're sitting at as my office and potential mailing address. So that's like the extent of it. I just need to be able to have a physical address to be able to mail documents to and sit at.
Fair enough. That sounds like the typical home office. Do we have anyone from any neighbors or butters who would like to comment? Or have any questions about your?
I do see one that is on the list. I'm not sure if she wants to comment though, or he does.
He or she. So it's the Shrankers. Yeah. So that's, that's the reason we're on. We just wanted to know what the extent was. So that sounds.
Home office is fine with us.
Yeah.
Concerned it might be more vehicle traffic or something like that. We just didn't know any of the details, home office. I mean, I have one. I do some, it's not time consulting my own. So I have no issues with that at all.
All right. And Mr. Pierce, would you confirm for your neighbors, the no additional commercial vehicles?
No additional traffic. There'll be no clients coming to the house, no employees coming to the house. It's solely I, me and my vehicle.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. And again, as we tell everyone who's coming in, in front of our board for home ox, special permits. Home offices are very common these days. Many of us have them. And as long as you are not impacting your neighbors, that's, that's the goal. As long as it's invisible. That is what, what the bylaws are intended to do. And I'm just looking to see here. Board members, any, any comments or questions for our applicant?
No, it seems, I think.
Straightforward.
It's very easily the concerns of the neighbor especially. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Agreed. And we have a motion here. I think we do. Bob, would you be so kind if you see that in your packet, just to.
With regard to the, with regard to petition of Robert Pierce for Caroline Road, North Reading, map 34 parcel 12 for a home occupation special permit to run his consultation business and or company pursuant to article 200-42 with the North Reading zoning bylaws, I move to grant the application for the home occupation special permit to Robert Pierce to be used at 4 Caroline Road. Again, map 34 parcel 12 with the following standard conditions, no person other than the residential occupant shall be employed therein for the purpose stated. No more than 300 square feet shall be devoted for use for that business purpose in the home. There shall be no display of goods, wares, signs related to the home occupation visible from the exterior. The special permit for home occupation runs with the applicant and is no way transferable to another, either through or by the business. There'll be no customers coming or clients to the premises. And that the special permit shall be valid for a period of four years pursuant to our bylaws.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Barbara and I.
Finn Ruguchi, I.
Jennifer Platt, I. All right. Thank you very much, everyone. And Mr. Pierce, good luck with your business. There is a 20 day appeal period on all special permits. And after that, you can pick up your permit from the, from town hall.
All right. Thank you, board.
All right. You are most welcome. Right.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Schrecker.
Yes, thanks for coming to the meeting.
Yes, we do very much appreciate when neighbors or butters come out and either support or voice their concerns. That's why it's a public hearing. So agreed. Thank you for coming and helping us do our job. Next thing I have up is Jeremy Bernardo for 372 Main Street.
And a 327.
Wonderful. Did I say that backwards?
Yeah.
Um, we'll get it right this time for sure. But like to open a virtual public hearing to be held Thursday, July 14th, 2022 at 7:00 PM on the petition of Jeremy Bernardo for a special permit to run a landscaping business located at 327 Main Street, North Reading, MA, map 12 parcel 133. And I'm just looking as we scroll through the files, we have any, no plans here. Special permit for landscaping business and you're back behind Boston Flower Market. Mr. Bernardo, can you tell us a little bit about your business and what you're hoping to do there?
We're just looking to keep our trucks parked out back. We do a lot of work with Boston Flower Market. We do a lot of support with them. We buy all of our products from him. So basically he gave us the opportunity to park our vehicles behind his flower market.
Right. That is going to be, could be a little bit tricky. And I'm going to get Jerry involved here because we have a number of businesses right on Main Street where the issue is the parking of vehicles in the highway business district. And where a land, yeah, a landscaping business is allowed and certain vehicles sort of in connection with a landscaping business or a gardening business would be allowed, but just the parking of trucks in and of themselves is problematic.
It is a landscape business. I run it out of there. If that's. I'm basically saying that he let me do that because it would benefit him as well. That's why we kind of work hand in hand. But it is, the landscapes has been in North Reading for over 10 years.
Jerry, can you, can you give us a little input on this? Have you talked to this, to the applicant? And I don't see anything of plans, like showing where this would be.
I sent you a narrative. You should have a narrative.
Oh, here you go. Okay. I have your narrative. I was looking for a plan. Let's see. You just sent a violation notice, you said, and they responded.
Yep. They responded. And I also, I also spoke with Bernardo Landscaping themselves. And they told me that they were going to store their vehicles in the back and they were going to be renting a small area work out of an office spot from 327 Main Street. I explained to them, you are allowed in the highway business district to have multiple businesses within the same, within the same address. But you need to make sure that your address matches where your vehicles are.
So is your concern, because I, since we do have several applicants here with similar issues, and I want to make sure that we are being, as a board, fair and consistent, is your concern as the zoning enforcement officer, simply the storage of vehicles separate from an ongoing or a functioning business? Or is, can you?
Our zoning bylaws, our zoning bylaws do not allow just, just, just storage of vehicles. You have to have a business, you have to have a business address there. It also doesn't allow storage of heavy, heavy equipment. If you were going to have such as a 10 wheel dump truck, that's, that, that will be considered heavy equipment. I'm not sure what Bernardo Landscaping has. I don't, I didn't see any heavy equipment when I went back there. I did see some smaller equipment. I saw some trailers. But, but in all, it did, it did look, did look fairly clean. And I did take some pictures of it. And I think you could see some pictures that I did send as well.
So before, I will, I will say. Right. So this. So I understand, Mr. Bernardo, it sounds like you would be, you're renting space there as well for your actual office space.
My wife, my wife has an office inside of Peter's building, Boston Flower Market. And then we also just run the business out of the back from there. It's not, I think I worded it incorrectly when I said store vehicles, but that's where they are parked at night. So I am running a business out of there and I do require vehicles to run my business. But it's not like I just store them and leave them there.
So I think what would be helpful for, for me is to have some sort of, of plot plan or at least a sketch of the property to show what space you're leasing. Where the vehicles would be stored, a sort of a just, or where the vehicles are parked that are being used in connection with your business. And a description of what type of vehicles are there? Is this, I mean, I know we.
They're just pickup trucks.
Okay, okay.
There's simple pickup trucks with trailers on the back that go and cut grass. I mean, there's nothing really special to it. Other than that, we have lawn mowers and trailers.
Right. Board members, that, that's some of your, your thoughts and questions on this.
We are also, we're also a corporation. I'm not sure if it says that on there. I am unsure if I was supposed to pull a business permit and be a corporation at the same time, because I emerged to the state. So I am just kind of looking to, for the guidance and what else I should do as well.
And have, have you, you said you've been here, been operating in North Reading for 10 years. Have you been in the same space or is this like a, a new?
I've been here for, I think, six years. And then before that, I was actually at All-Star Fence on Main Street before that. It's now Sweetman, I think.
For six years, were you here behind the flower market?
Hmm. And I did try to apply years ago for business permit and they said I didn't want at the time because I created myself into a corporation instead. And I went back again and I just said, I'll do the permit. I'll do whatever you want me to do. I just, I want to make sure that everyone is happy with me being there.
Madam Chair, if I may speak, speak on that. You please, you don't need a business certificate if you're a corporation, but you still need the permission from the board relative to a special permit to operate a landscape business out of that location. And that's part of our bylaws. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Jerry. Yes.
I, I have a question for Jerry. It's, it's more on, you know, your, your point earlier of saying, you know, fairness. Because we have a few of these. And lately we have on applicants. Jerry, is it more proximity to the business, to the highway district? In, in this case, because I, you know, I'm at the flower market a lot, you know, they're, they're, you know, they're in the back, they're neat. You know, is that a difference in, in your eyes?
If they're at the flower market and they have, they have their business operating out of the flower market and that's their, and that's the illegal business address. I do not have an issue with that.
Okay.
So it's.
That's how I feel. That's how I feel. But I just wanted to hear it from Jerry because like I said, I, I think it's different when you're changing, you know, the, the visual landscape of something that's very close to the road and, you know, could potentially be an eyesore as opposed to something that's, you know, kept neat and, you know, and, and in this case is a win-win for local businesses.
Peter from Boston Flower Market has always been very adamant about me staying out back, neat, out of the way, not visible from the street. Never let me park vehicles out front, just always out of the way, out of sight, out of mind type of deal. He never wanted me to be soliciting on the main road.
So Jerry, to be, if I might ask, so is this, is this, I know there was a mention of the word fairness earlier. So is the question here really coming down to the idea that because it's off main, it doesn't seemingly, or to my understanding, it bought any residential interest, it doesn't create any kind of visual, for lack of a better word, eyesore kind of idea. But the, the difference between Boston Flower and Bernardo or any other interest that's landscaping in nature is the, is the storage of the trucks. So is this, is this effectively what we're kind of working within the lines here? Because if, I'm not, this, this, obviously a differentiation between landscaping and the flower business. But they don't, they, other than maybe have delivery trucks, I mean vans or whatever. I mean, I'm not too sure where they put their vehicles and how many they even have for that purpose. But is this just a question of lining up trucks on the back lot? And just kind of knowing they're there, but not leaving there, causing a quote unquote problem for the nature of the, of the location, whereas another interest might approach us down the road and not literally, but figuratively. And, and ask, well, you know, you know, where am I going to put my, like my trucks are going to be behind the building too, and you won't see them. Is it kind of out of sight, out of mind? Or what do we?
Well, Bob, there's, there's, I would say one thing I would want us to remember and just focus on is under the highway business district. Landscaping is allowed by special permit with our approval. Storage of trucks is not allowed at all. So we don't have the, the right to approve that as a board if that were the sole function. So I think the, you know, there, I think the sort of layer of issues in my mind, one is what's the business that we're approving or considering in a landscaping business that has trucks involved with them could be allowed as a special permit item. But if it were not a actively practicing business at that location and they just wanted to have their trucks stored there, even if it was in the back, behind a fence, that's not something in, that we have. I think the, the authority to grant in the highway business district, that just, in terms of how I read our bylaws.
Thank you. Cause that's exactly what I'm trying to narrow here for me. And you've just done it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I ask some questions?
Of course. Maria, please.
Mr. Bernardo, how many trucks do you have back there?
I think six.
How often during the day are those trucks out working actively?
Every day.
Okay. Um, so, so would you, do they sit there for long periods? Okay, um, so, so would you, do they sit there for long periods of time? Are they mostly out on the road working?
On the road working, only at nighttime they're parked there.
In pursuant to your business, you are required to have trucks, I would assume, because it's a landscaping company, right?
I wish I didn't guess. It's pretty expensive.
Yeah, but you do have to transport trees and whatever else you have to do to plant, right?
Yep.
So it's part and parcel to your business. It's not, it's not because you're storing the trucks, right?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. And I think that was what we were trying to feather out. Another thing I will raise and it's requirement for anyone who's bringing a business in the highway business district, it's subject to review of any, of a plan by CPC. So any approval we give would be contingent on them blessing your, your, your layout and your plan. They, so I would like to just see a, I know you'll have to do it for them, provide some sort of formal plan, but I would like to see what, where everything goes. And given that it's in conjunction with your business, I would be inclined to, to support this, but I think would love a, just a little more input from you on what this, and how, how it works on the land. Do we have any, any questions from neighbors or butters while we're here? Great. Well, that makes that part easier or faster, I should say. What I would be inclined to do, again, open to the whole board here, is to say, let's continue this to our next meeting. If you could submit to us, you know, a, a plot plan, it could be with, doesn't have to be a full-blown architectural, but just a sketch of where things are going on the property. So what, what part you're leasing, what you're using and what your layout is. I think that would be very helpful for us. So we could see where, where trucks go. Do you have any other, well, I guess you can't. I was going to ask if you had any storage of mulch or materials on site. That's.
Oh, he does. I have to buy it from him.
That sounds like a, works out well for.
Everyone.
Okay, so no, no outside storage of materials for you. If, if anyone's doing it, it's Flower Market and that's.
Out of his business.
That, that's his. Well, Jerry can put that on his list.
So Mr. Bernardo, is there any other questions you have of us? Because obviously if, if we're going to continue the matter over for second, second presentation, if you will, just to make sure we can move on this without any.
The only question I have is, do I like sketch it? I get the plot plan from the town hall and then I'll just sketch my square that I typically just park and run my business out of. Is that what you're looking for now or?
That would be helpful if you can show if there's any fences.
But don't we have pictures that were already kind of sent from Jerry? I'm just, I'm really just.
But I don't know. I'm sorry, what?
I'm only really like tucked in like a 30 by 30 in the corner.
Excuse me, the pictures I only took are, are from basically the parking lot. I didn't go towards the back of the lot and take pictures of those.
Okay.
I did, I, just, just so I could clear this. I did explain this to you and I think it was your wife that needed a plan such as that and to come with that plan in which I explained that to everybody. And just, just make sure you bring that up.
Okay.
And if you have it earlier, just email it to Kathy and she will include it in our package. So we all have it remotely. Although unless the state votes to extend the remote meeting statute, well, they're supposed to vote by midnight or do it retroactively, we have to go, we have to go in person.
Yeah, the Senate put it, the Senate put it this afternoon in the, the bill that will probably get done tonight before midnight, extending to March 31st.
All right. We will know. By then. But, okay, that sounds good. Um, yeah, so I, I don't know how, what your lease arrangement is with the flower market, but typically a lease has, should have the area that you're leasing described. Maybe it was done more informally.
It would, we have obviously a lease with him, but it's more so run a business behind his building. There is no, like, I don't have a set like spot right, right there. And he didn't say you're stuck here. It was more so park back here, make sure. The problem with that spot is there's golf balls that fly everywhere. So I just kind of tuck myself in a corner and that's where I am.
But you can get ice cream every day. So that's pretty good.
Yeah, it works out well. It works out well. Yeah.
All right, that's, that sounds great. Thank you very much. I think this is, for me, it's very helpful to hear from you what you're doing and what you're, you want to be doing because we're, you know, we want to support businesses, but we also, we've got a set of bylaws we have to.
I'm sure, yeah.
Work with as well. If you would like to request an extension of this public hearing until, what was it, August? What is that Kathy? Whatever, remind me. August 11th. Yes, you need to request, just ask us. Would you?
Would you extend?
It would be our pleasure to. But procedurally, you need to make the request. So thank you. We'll look for your plan and we will revisit this next month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good night.
All right. I think next thing we have up, we have, next thing I have in my packet is 1 Forest Street for Mr. Jay Weaver. We have a Mr., I see an Amy Weaver. That sounds very, might, might be related. I, you're going to need to check your audio, Ms. Weaver. That was not coming through, but I will open the hearing. We have a virtual public hearing will be held Thursday, July 14th, 2022 at 7:00 PM on the petition of Jay Weaver, 1 Forest Street, North Reading MA, map 68, parcel seven for a variance from the size and rear setbacks to attach their existing garage by adding a breezeway between the garage and their house according to the requirements outlined in the dimensional and density regulations of North Reading zoning bylaws. And there we go, one open hearing. Ms. Weaver, we have some plans here, but would you like to just tell us briefly what, what you guys are planning on doing?
Yes, can you hear me okay now?
That's better. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for rearranging those. So we have an existing house and a detached garage. What we would like to do is connect the house to the garage. Our architect called it a breezeway. So that's what we're going with as far as breezeway. What it would do is put a master bedroom suite above the garage, put a laundry upstairs to the left of where the detached garage is. And then expand the three existing bedrooms for our needs. I think if you go down another slide, it would have sort of the proposed layouts. If that helps. That's the basement.
That's the breezeway.
There we go. So the plan would be again for a master bedroom above the garage on the right. We would have a walk-in closet and master bath. And then to the left of that area, we would have a laundry room and we have a couple of kids. So it would be a bathroom for the kids. And that would then be an open to below. That says open to below in that image right there. And we would take down the walls between two of the existing bedrooms. On the bottom side of that, that, that would remove the closet that is between those existing bedrooms and create larger three bedrooms space for us. And that's pretty much it. Unless you have questions, I I can help answer.
Yes, and I think we have at the very end of your packet, there's a plot plan showing the existing dwelling and the existing garage and the setbacks. And I'm going to see if I can see it on my screen, blow it up a little bit. My other screen.
You want to see the plot plan?
Yes, please, for the setbacks.
Very small.
It is very small. Can you blow that up at all?
We have a new system and it isn't allowing you to do that.
What? All right, I have it on my home screen too.
What about the little plus sign to the left? Yep.
Got it. So your parcel lot one and parcel B is someone else, is that right? That's so another house on sale on the street. That's, that's somebody else.
Parcel B is someone.
And there's a barn in the way back of your property?
Yes.
Is that right? So.
Yep, still our property there, yep.
Okay. And I am having trouble reading those setbacks from the garage.
I put in pencil what.
Okay.
I believe it is.
The 29, 24 and 29.4.
Am I right, Amy?
Yes.
And that's. So those are, are all, is there another street that goes on that side or are those all side yard setbacks?
There's three over a few parcels, yes, Mom Road. Yep, comes out on 2 Forest Street. Three parcels to the right of mine. Three small parcels to the right of mine. I'm not sure if you have the assessors map. That might make that road a little more clear.
No, I don't have it.
I did not see that in our.
And I thought they need the rear, but I didn't realize this was part of that property. So he feels as though they only need a side step back.
This is what I was just trying to, trying to confirm. If you on the very upper right-hand corner of the plan, there's a locust plan, a tiny little thumbprint locust plan, which shows this lot, which is sort of a pork chop lot, but they're built in the front. And then there's another, there's additional dwelling lots to the right and the left. So, yeah, I think that's. And what's our? Are we in a RA or sir?
I'm RR. RR, zoning district RR.
Residential rural. And you have a 25 foot side setback. And if that's the case, you are just squeaking. Yeah, if I'm reading this right and everyone pitch in here, but I think you're just one, potentially one foot over on that, the corner, the closest corner of the shed where it says 24. Is that right?
That's, that's what I would consider the side, yes.
I don't have an issue here, any.
But that, that, that setback, the 24, like, in other words, the only thing that's going to be added, that's going to run, most of the construction is going to be between the, the main house dwelling and the, currently the garage. And but there's going to be a flight of stairs added to the, as you look at the front of the house from forest, there'll now be a flight of stairs added, correct?
That would be inside, inside of the breezeway.
So I'm looking at the plan, the existing front elevation. And it might, that flight of stairs.
Oh, to the right of the.
Garage doors. I mean, as you face your garage doors, is there, do those stairs exist now?
Yes, there is a existing.
Okay. Okay, I didn't know. I didn't, I thought that was part of the, the change, but that's fine. Okay, thank you. All right. I mean, this, it doesn't seem like any of the existing setbacks are, are going to be modified. Everything's going to be between the building, the existing structure.
All the new construction will be in between those two existing buildings, yes.
And so there's no increase in the footprint of the garage? What was the garage portion? It's the same footprint, is that right?
Garage will stay the same. Yep. We're just connecting the two.
When they were separate, you didn't need a variance because you can have a standalone garage closer to a lot line than a contiguous building. Do we have anyone? Any butters who have questions or comments?
Yes. Can you hand me?
Your name and would you give your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, this is Marie LaRose. I live at 3 Forest Street. And I am to the, I guess if you're looking at the house, I'm to the right of the garage.
Mr. LaRose, nice to have you this evening.
Thank you.
What would share with us, what questions, concerns?
No concerns, no issues. I think it's a viable plan and I think it's fine. I have no problem with it whatsoever. I've been living here over 20 something years next to them and it's absolutely wonderful neighbors.
Likewise.
Love to hear that. Thank you. That's, that's, thank you for taking the time to come on this evening and share your support. That is.
You're welcome.
Neighborly, we like that. Anyone else? All right. Have my, my board, let you guys make a motion and, and vote on this. I will step out. Maria can stand in for me on this one?
So is there any, any further discussion from the board? Maria Vincent?
No.
So I'd like to move to close the, the public hearing. And with regard to no further questions from the board to close the board's participation in this, does anybody want to make a motion with regard to the variance request regarding 1 Forest Street?
Yeah, I'll move to grant the one foot variance to the northeast side setback to attach the house in the existing garage with the breezeway at 1 Forest Street, North Reading, mass map 68, parcel seven in accordance with the dimensional and density regulations.
Sorry, I have a comment.
Oh, great, sure.
Yeah.
Sorry. Sorry.
So I think it was not just the one. Foot from the side, I think it was also the thirty-nine from the house, does that, or no, the thirty-nine goes all the way to the back of the property?
So the thirty-nine is also a side?
Okay.
The twenty-four is the, the twenty-four is the only question there.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, once we reached something, I wasn't going back and.
No, nice. Good to double check, especially when you have an odd-shaped lot.
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay. With regard to the motions, um, put forward. All in favor?
Ben Ragucci, aye.
Maria Lockhart, aye.
Bob Green, aye. Thank you, board, um, so, um, Ms. Weaver. Motion is granted and approved, uh, after the, um, you can, after the regulatory. Pending period, um, you're more than welcome to get a copy of the final order. That during that period. Any objection or. Or. Request, uh, in, in ops, in a, against it, uh, could be filed, but failing that. Uh, the, uh, the order will be. Formally entered and allowed, so. I think you're all set, you have any questions for the board?
Nope, so in twenty days, I'll go to the town hall and just see if everything's. Still good?
Printed and, printed in, and on paper, yes.
If there are any. Oppositions, will I get notified, or should, do I?
You will, you will get, you will be alerted, you'll be notified, and when you do pick up your variance, you wanna record that with the registry, so it's on record, um, in your title.
Thank you so much.
You're most welcome, well, good luck with your addition, it sounds, looks lovely.
Thank you, thank you, board, thanks, Marie.
You're welcome.
Welcome, good night. Alright.
Some matter, you're going on to, are you off hearing, or are you just? Uh, awaiting your eight o'clock matter?
I am standing by for that, so why don't. You open this next one, and I will, you, you three can. Lead off, and I will participate as. As I'm able.
Fair enough. The next matter, um, with regard to. Appeal, appeal to a decision by the building commissioner regarding. One-ten Main Street. Filed with the board. The petition of Sean Ferris as representative for R E C R Realty LLC. Regarding one, uh, one-ten Main Street, a decision of the building for the timetable to comply at one-ten Main Street. Map twenty-four parcel six, North Reading, are any of the parties to the application? With us tonight? That would probably be. More particularly, very likely Reading lumber. As a resident at one-ten. Uh, he's mute. Mister Stroud is, is muted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hi, uh, Mister Stroud, good evening.
How you doing? I, I work reading, yes, Jamie showed.
Uh, so. A cease and desist order, um, was sent to you dated May second. Uh, twenty-twenty-two, um, from the, uh, the building department, uh, North Reading. If I might, and for the record. I'll read this, uh, the cease and desist order, that being again, addressed to Reading letter, Reading lumber. Care of, in this case, Charlie Strode. Regarding one-ten to one-twenty-four Main Street outside storage slash every equipment. Dear Mister Strode, it was noted that you have many pieces of heavy equipment at left and right side. Of the front of the above subject property, the left side of the property is now encroaching onto Route twenty-eight. At the same time, you have storage of goods at the left front of the property, looking through. Your property file do not see where you have permission from CPC or the ZVA for storage of outdoor materials in this location in accordance with the town bylaws. Chapter, uh, two-hundred dash thirty-nine. States in part, it follows outdoor storage of materials and supplies is prohibited unless specifically approved by the community planning commission through the site plan review. Paragraph, therefore, you are in violation of the town bylaws, section twenty-two-hundred dash thirty-nine for vehicle storage. No use classification as listed in the nineteen ninety-seven North American industry classification. System is permitted in the highway business district, which is not listed, and therefore. Considered prohibited as per section two-hundred dash thirty-two, furthermore, as previously mentioned, you are in violation of two-hundred dash thirty-nine A two. F two, you must discontinue this issue and remove all storage. And heavy vehicle forthwith, as such, you are hereby ordered to take action or remove the storage of vehicles and merchandise. From this parcel except this for storage provided for in your approved site plan dated. April sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one revised, May first, twenty-twenty-one, within thirty days, as the date of the store, if you fail to comply. Town reserves the right to initiate fines and illegal action against you to compel your compliance, you have a right to appeal. My order to the zoning aboard, zoning board of appeals, within thirty days of the receipt of accordance with. Uh, chapter forty, A, section eight and fifteen of the mass general law, sincerely, Jerry Knoll. Building Commissioner, zoning enforcement officer, town of North Reading. Mister, um, Strode, how are you? We welcome, um, uh, some conversation, and I know Jerry's on the, uh, on, within the meeting as well. To clarify for the board and those listening and viewing, uh, what seems to be, uh, more specifically, more specifically the problem.
Yeah, so I wanted to ask for a continuance to next, uh, till the next meeting.
Okay. If I, uh, just for purposes, if, um. I don't, I don't know if the board will have a problem with that. Purpose of the continuance, is it for?
Charlie Strode couldn't make it an emergency, and his lawyer couldn't, uh, make it either to the meeting tonight.
Okay, uh, is the August eleventh. Enough of a continuance time for, for Mister Strode and, and counsel?
Yeah, should be no problem.
Okay. Any objection from the board to permit the continuance? Uh, any? Always forget to ask, uh, will you be available? From the building department, Jerry, for August eleventh?
No, I will not, I will be, I will be on vacation.
So. That, I think is of, of interest to us, because. You have the most. Immediate in person, in-person understanding of the, uh, the situation and the history. Is there any? Any thought to. Putting it further out to allow for. Commissioner. Commissioners, um, participation.
From what I understand, Reading Lumber secured, uh. Sean Ferris. And, uh, Sean Ferris basically was able to, um, get a lease signed. For the crane company that is there, which is the tree service company, and they will be moving out, correct me if I'm wrong, starting September one. My concern is that it starts September one and doesn't go on till September thirtieth, it starts September one. To have a lead time as to when that, when that's going to be out. And so it doesn't languish. Number two, there are vehicles, heavy equipment vehicles, uh, ten-wheel dump trucks on the right-hand side. There is nothing in there, in, within their. Site plan that basically allows the ten-wheel dump or the storage of any of that to that side. There's storage of pallets that they have to the left-hand side. That they, that is not just for display, it's also for retail and for sale, they cannot have storage in that area. And speaking with, with, um, with the town planner, she is in full agreement with that. They can have, and they do have, a display of goods at the sidewalk, that is allowed. So, I spoke with their attorney in depth, and their attorney is basically willing to meet with Danielle and myself. To discuss the heavy vehicles on the right-hand side, and also the storage. That, that is currently there, and which I think presents its, presents an issue. On the left-hand side. With that said, I would like to know. How, how we're gonna go about this first off? With, with a continuance, I don't have an issue with the continuance, but I do have an issue with. With the lead time of that September first lease date, and I think, uh, Mister Sean Ferris, I think he may be on, he may be able to speak, speak to that.
Uh, Kathy, uh, Mister Ferris.
He's not muted.
We have an issue with your audio, Sean. Now you're muted, now you're not. Try again.
Now he's muted.
Yeah, I'm fine. Okay, Lynn.
Okay. Don, you wanna try calling in? Will you decide signing out and come back in?
Yeah, I think, if you have a phone, could you try calling? Okay, while we're awaiting, uh, Mister Ferris's. Rejoining us, uh, by audio. While I have a moment, is. Is, uh, you, first matter that was before the board tonight, that being the petition of, um, Cindy Aguero regarding, uh, four-seventy-five Park Street. Is, uh, is anybody regarding that petition joined us, uh, since the beginning of the meeting? While you still with us, Jen, do you think it might be just, uh, continue the matter?
Yeah, when we continue that one, that's a special permit for. For chickens, that's, uh, in case she wants to come back next month, I'd be okay, I'm okay, I'm. Allowing them to come back in. So let's continue that.
So for the petition of, um, Cindy Aguero regarding four-seventy-five Park Street. That matter will be continued to our August eleventh, um, meeting.
So on, on our, on our current matter for one-ten. I, I hear Jerry's concerns, and I think they're relevant, that. Would like to have a schedule of how the petitioner is planning to, um, address these issues. And the fact that they are willing to work directly with. The building commissioner and town planner, I think it's wonderful if they can work this out, and they don't need. Our input here, that's fine. This is framed as a. As a appeal of the building commissioner's decision, and obviously, if they can work it out. Directly, that's, uh, we, we. I'm all in support of that.
And I have, um, Sean Ferris on the line now.
Sean, if, uh, you would like to. Open it up to him, Sean, can you tell us something about your, the scheduling of your, of your new lease and the, the, the plans to relocate?
Don, can you hear her?
Yes.
She wants to know about your plans to relocate.
Yeah, um, he's proceeding relocating, uh, the staff are transitioning on September first. Uh, they're trying to move out as soon as possible, like, in that timeframe, so definitely, you know, everything's. Looking, uh, normal on that, by the end of the month guarantee of, and by September thirtieth, so we can probably be gone, and hopefully, we'll be gone by the fifteenth, but. The matter is not, you know, some of the stuff moved correctly and set up, so they have to recover what they have, set everything up, that's gotten on September first. And, uh, they'll be out as soon as possible, but they'll let, they won't be there beyond the thirtieth.
Thank you, Mister Ferris, I, I appreciate that. And we appreciate you working with the, the building commissioner to help bring. Bring that into compliance, uh, so that's, I know that's one of. One of Jerry's biggest concerns, or on that site, and there are others, so Jamie, if you and your. The appropriate folks from your business can set up a time to meet with. With Commissioner Noel and the town planner. Hopefully, in the, you know, near, very near future, and then maybe we can leave this on the schedule for August eleventh, and hopefully. Jerry, before you're gone, we can get an update from you. To consider, I mean, again, this is. If everything's in compliance. Essentially becomes moot, so.
Excuse me, madam chair, but I, I wanna, I, I wanna be sure that, um, uh, Reading's lumber's attorney is there to meet us as well. I want, I, I do want him or her, I know it's him I've been dealing with, on the site, please.
That is a fair request, and Mister Strode, if you could relay that to your counsel.
Absolutely, he'll meet you there, no problem, yes.
Thank you.
Great. Alright. So why don't we continue this to August eleventh, and then in the meantime, um, we'd ask the. Petitioner to arrange to meet with his counsel. Building inspector and town planner to see if they can work out. Way to come into compliance and to comply with your existing. Site plan from CPC. Great, and we will see you and counsel and whomever else on the eleventh.
Right, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a very good evening. Come. Um, I, the next item we have. I got an out of order, or my, are these all seeming very familiar, or?
No, it's, uh, one forty, one forty-two Main Street is the, um, final new matter on the, uh, agenda tonight.
And Bob, you mentioned you had a, um, not a direct conflict, but enough of a.
Concern.
You would like to, concern, you'd like to recuse yourself from this, so.
Yes.
So.
Thank you, yep.
So you may.
Thank you.
Of course, no, we appreciate that. And here, so, um, let me open the public hearing, a virtual public hearing will be held Thursday, July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two at seven P M. On the petition of one forty-two Main, uh, Main Street Realty LLC, care of law offices of Richard G. D. Giralamo. Don't, if I misstated that, please excuse me, for a special permit to run a landscaping business and or stone business. Located at one forty-two Main Street, North Reading, M A, parcel twenty-five. Or map twenty-five parcel three. And we have a number of things in violation notices, orders to correct. In the file, I'm not gonna read each one of these. But essentially, this is repeated and ongoing violations, not complying with. But essentially, this is repeated and ongoing violations, not complying with. The site plan. There's an old site plan from CPC. Storage of of heavy equipment in the highway business district, again, that's something that we've. We are trying to deal with consistently here and the last letter that I see from Commissioner Noel in the file. Mentions that the gas station at one forty-four Main Street. Let's see, I make sure I'm getting the right, the gas station has recently been sold. Said that he did not recall any language in his purchase and sale that allows him to traverse over his property to one forty-four. Alright, so let's. See if we have a petitioner here who can give us a little update on what's going on in the property. With one forty-two, what you're looking to do and take it from there.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Appeals, Richard D. Geralamo, I'm an attorney at. Four twenty-four Broadway in Somerville, here behalf of the applicant one four-two Main Realty LLC. This property is located in the Highway Business zoning district, consists of approximately three point five. At present, the rear portion of this lot consists of a trailer park. For residential mobile homes. The portion of the property that we are before you tonight. Requesting a special permit for is an approximately ten thousand square foot fenced area. At the front portion of the lot and we are seeking a special permit to allow a. Both a landscaping and a stone cutting business to operate on that. Merely that approximately ten thousand square foot portion of the property. The. Lary to that requesting that vehicles and equipment for that for those business. Bitted to be stored on the property. Madam Chair, the. The there is no planned development for this site, the owner is requesting a special permit merely for the use. The two, the two businesses that are in question here are not. Would not be operating, literally operating from this. They are using this area primarily to store vehicles and equipment both for. The landscaping business and for the stone cutting business. I think you would find that there is a history of automotive use at this. Uh, which date back, which dates back to. At least nineteen ninety-five. The previous owners of. One two Main Street and the gas station at one forty-four Main, Main Street. Which was recently sold, uh, was the Nazaro family, uh, they operated the gas station and. They also use this particular area that's in question to store vehicles. Automotive vehicle both for repair, uh, et cetera, so there is a very, very long. History, almost. Thirty years of history that goes back here at least. That shows a history of automotive use, we think that this. We think that the special permits that are being sought here clearly comply with the. Conditions set forth in section two hundred dash twenty-eight E. Govern, excuse me, uh, D governing the approval of special permits. Section D recognizes landscape and horticultural services as a classification as well as lumber. Other building material dealers that they class, and again, these you, the these particular businesses are. Not literally op- operating from this site, uh, they are primarily being used to store vehicles. Similarly, we believe that under dash thirty-nine, the property, which is a three point five acre lot. There is existing infrastructure to support this requested use, there is essentially no infrastructure that's needed other than. What's presently there, uh, we feel that this property, which is in the highway business district. You know, one goes along Main Street and sees a number of similar such uses along Main Street. All along Main Street in the highway business district, which obviously is a major thoroughfare and with ready. We do not see this use as creating any kind of undue traffic congestion, in fact. Uh, or impairing pedestrian safety as I indicated, the site is fenced off from the rest of the park. Moreover. While in the past access was through the gas station, there would be no access to this lot. From the gas station, so the only entry would be from the entry of the trailer park, so it would be no. No inhibition at all of the entryway or egress from the gas station to get into this particular lot. These uses. Which we, you know, we would take the position that this, these particular uses are in fact less cumbersome. Than even the history of automotive uses that has been here for at least back to nineteen ninety-five. Finally, I would ask you to consider. That. The uses which are permitted by special permit. Are consistent, as I said, with other similar such uses along the highway business district, I think you can travel all. Up and down Main Street and you would see similar uses, we do not see this, these particular. Special permits, if they are granted to allow these essentially storage of vehicles and equipment in anywhere, in any way. Impairing the um, the trailer park and in the. The 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 for the residents of that trailer park, which. Which is in close proximity, but again separated, so I am joined, I believe he is on the Zoom. Uh, by Mr. Peter Pianto Dosie, who is a trustee of the. In fact, one forty, Main Realty, uh, in both he and I. Prepared to have answer any questions which you or other members of the board may have, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, um, you know, and this one is unfortunately, it puts us in a, we're in a tough spot here and I think you you've heard. Uh, a number of the applicants that came before you. We, you know, in terms of our bylaws, the storage of heavy machinery is a prohibited use in the highway district. Business district, it doesn't mean that it hasn't occurred in the past and I think you've seen Commissioner Noel. Uh, both from this property and the numbers of cease and desist violation letters that he sent. As well as to other. Businesses along Main Street to try to stop this pattern of simply parking and storing. Uh, heavy construction, equipment, heavy vehicles on Main Street as opposed to having. An operating business that you're trying to support the the retail business on on Main Street. You had mentioned that you're looking solely for the special permit on use, but any, any business that's coming into the highway business district does. Uh, we told Mr. Fernando, uh, needs to go in front of the CPC with a site plan for approval and for. With a a plan for the layout that shows what you're gonna be doing on site. I know historically, there's been, um, going back years, there's been an issue trying to get. All of the old abandoned vehicles that the repair shop had next door behind the fence, it was. So. I will allow my board members to speak, but I I will say from the, from the get-go, I I have concerns. Um, Madam Chair. Maria, let me yeah, see if they'd like to to jump in and then you can, we can go back with some questions.
Yeah, my concern is this, the storage issue that we haven't, I I don't, I don't understand that and we need to make sure that the vehicles aren't being stored there and it seemed like almost like. When Counselor was explaining it, that that is sort of part of the business, I'm just unclear on that.
If I may, uh, we would be happy to bring, if you would allow us to continue the matter, we would be happy to bring. The operators of those two businesses or their representatives before the board. And present to you what's specifically, uh, in addition to storage of vehicles and they may. They would be doing at the site, I do not in fact know if this is considered heavy equipment. Uh, I do not know the subject of the, but I, that clearly. We, and I thought we, I thought had an understanding with the building department as to what. The use classifications would be. The. The storage of vehicles, I think, was was an ancillary use. To the. Landscape and horticultural service, I mean, uh, you know, landscaping business, clearly there was not an intention to be. Conducting retail business there, but. I think that pot and parcel of that business is their ability to obviously store vehicles, so. You know, we could come back, if we could come back before you with the operators and present to you. My belief is that, you know. There would be activity at the, at the site in the morning hours to, uh, essentially. Move equipment off the site and then probably later in the day when the equipment returns to the site. And similarly, I believe that's the case with the stone cutting business, uh, but I, if if you would allow us to do that and then. If you feel inappropriate for us to go back before the. Think you said CPC Madam, Madam Chair is that?
That's correct, it's our our planning.
Correct.
Planning group, it's that community planning commission.
Happy to comply with that as a necessary step if you would allow us. A short period. And and I think, you know, clearly we we would have the specifics in place to. To do that, you know, to 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 present fully a site plan through the CPC.
That could be helpful and Jerry, while we have, we have you here and we may not have you and we don't have you next month, would you? Like to take an opportunity and. Um, I know you have a, you've had a long-term relationship with this property to give us any more color on this.
Well, currently they, currently they, they're in violation of their site plan, I spoke with the town planner, uh, we went to the property. They have an opening on on a trailer park street side, which is not allowed in accordance to their site plan. And as Counselor noted that he's willing to go back to CPC, so if he's willing to go back to CPC, he's going to have to address that. He's going to have to address the cement bollards he has stacked up along the street because that's not part of his his site plan. I sent pictures to everybody as I send pictures to every property that that we have and this property has a lot of trash bags. Uh, the fence is all broken on the syrup, on the garage side. And there's a lot of pallets, you know, and a lot of debris that's thrown in there and I, and I have pictures showing that, I just wanna make sure that they, that they understand. If if they do get something like this, they need to keep this in in a clean and and safe manner. We can't have any habberage of 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 garbage, just as that with the, with the plastic bags that are there.
Understood.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner, so I would say, I mean, again, we're. We're really looking for, to support businesses, but we we're not looking for Main Street to be a parking lot and particularly. Parking lot for. Everyone's trucks and and equipment, so I would say revisit your plan. Talk to your, your business owners and talk about what you're thinking about, um, how you'd be using this and then. Uh, the plan that you'd be taking to the CPC can submit to us as well. Because landscaping businesses are something that we are. Supporting. But with. With conditions and we wanna make sure that the properties are are laid out so they're attractive, so they are. Enhancing Main Street rather than just being a parking lot.
If I may, Madam Chair, just wanna add, thank you and I appreciate that, add that. This matter did go before the CPC back in two thousand and fourteen, early two thousand and fifteen. And I'm looking at a plate. Dated September point fifth, two thousand fourteen, that was prepared by LJ hearing. Which did propose, which did. The proposed storage of vehicles, that's I repair and prepping for sale. Approximately ten thousand square foot fenced area along the three point five. Oh, along it's in in the three point acre lot, but certainly, if you would allow it. A short continuance, I will try to come back before you address not only the issues and the concerns that you and. Those of the board have had, but but the concerns expressed by Mr. Noel, uh, such as the bollards. The garbage bags, um, et cetera, so i- if you would, if you would allow us that, I would, I would be most appreciative.
I have no issue with that, court members, um, August eleventh, work for you, Counselor.
Yeah.
Alright, we're gonna have another busy. Busy meeting next, uh, next month. Alright, we will look forward to seeing your plan and seeing.
I'm sorry, what, after that, uh, love, uh, August eleventh, if I may, Madam Chair.
It will be September, we are typically the second Thursday of the month. Don't know if we have a. Date on the calendar yet, but let's just see what that would be.
I I don't know how often the the this board meets, if I, maybe I would request if it was. Okay with the members of the board, that rather than August eleventh, it'd be put over to your first meeting. Just so that we adequately have time to address some of these issues and concerns that were raised.
That is fine, so, um, I'm looking at September eighth. And I don't know how that all works with everyone for back to school and end of. Sadly, end of summer travels, it's, um, is everyone back on the eighth, I think I am.
I think school's already in session by the eighth.
I think sadly, it will be that maybe the first full week of. Of local schools for.
So Labor Day falls on the fifth, so yeah, school resume that week.
Thought Maria was crying.
I'm joining you, alright, so if that's.
I mean, I, you know, uh, September fifteenth, I mean, the the problem with September is it begins on a Thursday, so September first is Thursday and you get the long weekend. So maybe we should just push to September fifteenth, that center of the month.
I I'm fine with that, anyone, anyone have a preference?
That's a good idea, I do.
Works for me.
Good call, good call, Bob, thank you, alright, so, uh, we will post, uh, continue that until September fifteenth. We look forward to seeing your plans and you again then.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, I think that is our last formal hearing, we haven't. we have a number of minutes from prior months and we have everyone here so we can actually approve those. Just lovely. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We will. Let's see.
So the first set was April, April fourteenth. The attending members was Chairperson Platt, myself, Bob Brain and Maria Lockhart. I had a moment to review them. In particular was the high school illumination sign was permitted. A home occupation permit was permitted. A second, actually, we had a run on home occupation permits that night. And we began the introduction of the matter with regard to Fleet Bank, which got subsequently continued. I reviewed the minutes and I would move, I found them to be complete and well representative of the meeting conducted. So with that, I would move to, I, I make a motion to accept the minute, the minutes of the zoning board of appeals for the April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting.
Maria Lockhart seconded that motion.
Beautiful. See, so all in favor, you said it was myself. I will vote in favor Jennifer Platt.
Bob.
Yes.
Lovely. Thank you. Bob, you're on a roll. You want to keep?
So that brings us to May fifteenth. It was myself, Vincent, Vin and Maria. At that meeting, there was a motion that began the, this sojourn that has become three forty Main Street. Both matters were continued. Matter regarding the variance for the upgrade lighting. Again, regarding the Fleet Bank, that was continued. Special permit by Dr. Cox at North Reading Veterinary was removed as it had been resolved. And in addition, in decor approved, as was Tugaw Garage, variance to connect the garage. I had a chance to review the minutes as having attended and found the recitation in the, to be completed and representative. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the May fifteenth, twenty twenty meeting of the zoning board of appeals.
And I'll second that.
And Maria, you were the other participating member.
Um, should I third that?
All in favor, I would. Bob Green, I.
Maria Lockhart, I.
Vin Ragucci, I.
And that brings us to June ninth. Members present, Chairperson Platt, myself and Vincent Ragucci. Once again, three forty Main Street, as for both the petition for the repair shop and the construction landscaping business were both continued. Once again, the matter regarding the Fleet Bank and the, the hope to, for variance to upgrade the lighting was discussed and again, continued to tonight's meeting. There was an approval for a permit for chick, to raise chickens. A home occupation business permit was granted and a variance for an addition to, for Alvira Road. I had, have, had, had attended the meeting and participated. I had a chance to review the minutes. I'm going to be complete and fairly representative of what was discussed and conducted that meet that night. I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for the zoning board of appeals for the meeting of June nine, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor of Bob Brain, I.
Maria Lockhart, I.
And Madam Chair person, you were the third party.
I will vote I as well.
And that closes.
Thank you.
There's three minutes to resolve the minutes.
Thank you. And I just got an email that the House and Senate has voted to extend the remote meeting deadline until March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, so we can go remote unless anyone is eager to go back to Town Hall.
I think the remote meeting format works really well. Both for the parties, petitioning and for, for the members, but also for the contributions by neighbors, the butters, things like that. I think it's just a simple convenience.
What's going to happen when we have that big, huge meeting coming up though, at some point? About, um.
We'll keep continuing it.
The forty B, well, that one was, I mean, that one filled the high school auditorium. That was, that was big. So as you know, that's still in litigation. We're waiting to hear what happens with that. Hopefully it'll get resolved in the town's favor or the developer will come back with a plan that's workable. But yeah, but that will be interesting. And maybe not before March twenty twenty-three. I'm not sure. I haven't heard an update from town council in a bit on that. So that's still in process. That's that, yes. So we will be remote again. It was nice when we occasionally got to see each other in person, but this is super convenient, as you said, both for us and for people, you know, for neighbors who want to be able to contribute or have a comment and not spend all evening sitting in Town Hall. So that's a plus.
It was, it was certainly a positive to see Mr. Bernado stay in and see what was going to resolve with regard to storage of trucks for the landscaping business on.
He's very interested.
Yes, well, and, and rightly so. I mean, I think, and this is something we, I, I do want the board to be thoughtful of and we want to be considerate and consistent. And Jerry is working very hard to bring these businesses into compliance. And simply because someone has been doing it for a long time, doesn't mean that it's appropriate for.
Whatever decisions were made were correct, maybe at the time they made them, but it's not anymore.
Right, so.
Maybe they weren't correct at the time they made them.
And that could be true. So I, I think it's, and I would like to get CPC involved. And I think Kathy, I don't, sometimes we get requests from CPC to comment on a plan. And there's not sufficient time to bring it in front of our board at a formal hearing, which is how we should be commenting on those. But if all of these businesses are going to now go to CPC with a plan, you know, we want to see those plans and we may want to have a liaison from the board sit in on the CPC meetings to, to get some input. Because I think we really, we really are trying to make some progress and improvements on Main Street. I think the town planner and I know Jerry are very much taking the lead on that. And I just want us to make sure we're supported, that we don't see a plan with ten trailers and dump trucks approved.
I can make that part of the agenda. Things going before CPC, if you want to comment on it, I could either give it to them or make you aware what they're.
Yeah, if it's something, if it's a applicant that's in front of us both, I I think it is helpful for the boards to be, to have some sharing of information and discussion. So we're not, you know, everyone's working in a silo of isolation. I mean, that this.
It's hard to coordinate when they meet and when the materials are given in. Because I know we wanted input from CPC on one seventy-two park and they didn't.
CPC too, that it's not, there's, we're looking at a use special permit, but there's the whole issues with site layout and we, we look at that too. But CPC also has a
Another job part of it.
They have the job to be reviewing and helping work out site plan and landscaping and make sure properties look good. So, and, and traffic flow works well and all those issues. So where there's definitely some overlap between our boards and what we do. So it's, it's nice to, anyway, just a thought. Yeah, that would be good, I thought. So happy summer, everyone. Will enjoy July, the rest of it. We'll see you August. Hopefully people will have great vacation stories to share when we come back in a month. And you too, both Maria and Vincent will both be fully healed and better. Everyone be careful out there. Apparently it's dangerous world for my board. All got, anything?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you very much. Yes. All right, have a good night, guys. Appreciate it.